Thank you. All right, next up we have fiscal year 2019 budget discussion and vote.
Sorry, I've got a few questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm late to the games.
Yep. Well, we've got to vote tonight, so how late are you?
Can't be too late.
So can I just, while Lisa's gathering her questions, so the budget that appears in your packet is, the Finance Board has voted on every budget now, so when they met with you guys last week, they were still discussing a few of them. We have now met and they now voted. So their Finance Board recommends column is their formal votes that they plan to present to town meetings.
So are we going to go through the budget line by line?
However you'd like to do it.
We can do it either way. We just got to vote on it, so we did have...
Or we could just hold, like I have a few things on here.
We could just go down and whatever departments you have questions on.
Yeah, maybe it just makes sense to discuss it when we get to the place instead of...
Yeah, if you want to do that, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that might be easier.
Okay.
It's not in there because I gave it to you separate. It's in the separate, it was in the packet.
What's that?
The packet from last meeting, right?
No, the packet for tonight is a new copy of the budget.
There's a new one.
I didn't print off, I didn't include it in the warrant, it's still a separate document.
16-879-649, I have that number memorized.
We have a new document that was part of the mailing, the email.
Yes.
Seth, we should be referring to that.
Yes, correct. That is the most up-to-date, yes, 16-879-649, yes. That includes, that's all of the Finance Board recommends column.
And it was part of the agenda.
Yes, it was.
And the school is locked in? Education, that number is locked?
With the exception of Essex Tech, as we talked about Monday, they're the wild card.
Is that under Article 42?
Yes, it is.
All right, so what we'll do is basically do what we did the other night, and we'll vote on each section, starting with the moderator.
However you'd like to do it.
I want to do it the most efficient way possible. If I'm not being the most efficient way, please tell me.
Well, I would recommend don't vote on each section. I would go through your questions and then either recommend as a total or section by section. I don't know that you need to take an individual vote on every single budget, but that's up to you.
All right, so we can just do general government and then work our way down, okay. All right, so we'll look at general government, is there any questions on that?
I need just a second.
So general government includes the moderator, selectmen, finance, town accountant, board of assessors, town council, technology, town clerk, conservation, planning, zoning board of appeals, municipal buildings, and insurance.
Okay, I apologize, but I can't look at this screen or the other screen at once.
Do you want my hard copy, Lisa? I only have one, but you can have mine for now.
Thank you.
And that totals 1.520578?
Correct. So what that includes, just for Ed and Lisa who were not here last week...
I read the meeting minutes though.
Okay. Ed, did you read the meeting minutes from the last meeting?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Did you read the meeting, did you read the meeting minutes from the workshop?
Yeah.
That you missed? Okay. So the consulting services line is a new addition, and that was discussed at that meeting for fire or any consulting services that the board may choose to utilize.
Okay. So which section are you on right now?
General government, so anything under the sort of the first page and a half, maybe?
Page and a quarter, yeah, page and a half.
I think you had talked about the highway, 40,000 increase in salary, but they gave that up in order to have that facilities person, is that correct?
Correct, correct. So the Finance Board did support a full-time facilities person, so that is under the municipal buildings line.
And the cemetery full-time wages, that request, did you guys discuss that?
Yep, so the cemetery submitted a revised request. So their total budget only changed by $585 since their first request, but they broke it out. So instead of going for a full-time superintendent like they were planning, they decided to go with a full-time laborer and a part-time clerical and then part-time summer help. So they feel that that's a better approach to staff the needs of the cemetery office to get the work done.
Okay. So I think I'm all set for that section.
Okay.
Denise, you were going to say something?
No, I was just going to see if anyone else had questions on general government.
Any questions on that section?
No.
Oh, did the, did the public relations go in that section?
Yes, it did. So the public relations is under the municipal buildings department as well. So that removes, you'll see when we go through police and fire, their expense line that paid for that has been decreased, and then there is a slight additional amount to cover the rest of the town department. So if this board, any program, library, council on aging wanted to put out a program press release, it would be covered. They are getting about 5,000 people viewing their press releases. In comparison, our new Facebook page is getting about 1,300. So they are still getting a much wider viewing area of the press releases that they're putting out.
So is that the rationale? Because in my mind, I have not viewed public relations as being a necessary expense.
So both police and fire have fought to keep it in their budget. The Finance Board felt that if they are going to continue with those services, they should be under one contract supervised by this board and have them in one location. So in order to do that, again, we figured the town could benefit since we have no newspaper, we really don't have any media coverage of the town.
And the 7,200, what was the price with the fire department and the police department piecemeal?
2388 for the fire department, 2388 for the police department.
So we're increasing it by 2,500 approximately?
Twenty-three, yeah, 2300.
About 2,300.
For the use of the rest of the town?
For the rest of the town. Everyone except for the board of health because they're in a consortium already with the same company.
And you feel like that's a, I'm just trying to understand, you feel like that's a worthwhile expense?
I will say more and more towns are utilizing them. Again, we don't, we've called newspapers to cover and to run pieces on us, we just don't get the media coverage, so I think for a year we could try and see if we're getting better outreach. That was a criticism we had.
Because where do they get coverage from?
So they send it out to, so they are on all like the town crier, they're on all the town pages, they send them to a whole bunch of newspaper reporters. So the piece where the police officers from Newbury Port, Georgetown, and our officers, that stemmed from a press release that was sent out. So then the newspaper picked it up and actually ran a story on it. Again, I would say to add all town departments, it may be beneficial to at least try it. I know more and more towns are using their services.
And they weren't willing to give us a discount because that's, it seemed a little high.
I will say it actually is. He gave us a, he does live in town, so he gave us a discounted rate. So that 7,200 would cover, not the water and sewer because they're enterprise funds, that will cover all town departments with the exception of the board of health.
So you'll notify the applicable town departments that this is a service that's available to them?
Correct. So I will say the Finance Board wanted to make sure that still everything is filtered through either me or this board so that they're not just sending out random press releases that this board might not agree with, so that there's at least one point of contact reviewing that information from all town departments, but that's their take on it.
Yeah, it's not that I disagree with that, but I just think that that creates another, another layer, and I feel like we continue to create layers and layers and layers.
I don't disagree, but I think now, you know, we kind of discourage people from talking to the, like if there was an issue and someone came in here and wanted a statement from a specific department, we still filter that through the board so that they're not saying whatever they want to.
Yeah, I'm not in support of sort of making it, I think there's some value to people having some autonomy. There are, most of them are elected positions, and if people have, you know, there's mechanisms for people to be either not re-elected or, you know, if they do something inappropriate, it can be addressed. I just think, because then you're delaying it. If it's got to go through, if it's got to follow this process, it may not even go out as timely as it would have if they...
Right. I mean, I think the belief was if it was an emergency situation, it still goes out right away, but we're talking other things that might conflict with maybe campaign finance laws that someone might not be aware of, or, you know, something that might be against, you know, the issue happened in the past that it was a position that the board did not take, that a release went out contradicting that statement, and that's sort of what started that discussion, that there should be someone reviewing them or this board should be signing off on certain topics or things like that. I'm fine either way. I just think we could see how it plays out in year one to see if their services are beneficial to the town, where we don't have media coverage elsewhere.
Well, I'm in support of using their services if you think that's valuable, but the added layer of making every town, if they want to post something, have to go through you, I think that just creates, how many, how many different town departments are there?
Well, there's quite a few. I mean, I can tell you though, you know, I think the police haven't sent out a press release and, you know, I don't think we're going to be sending them out daily. Again, I'm fine either way, I...
Well, I just think if it's, for instance, now the library can use it for, you know, an event that they're having.
Yep.
Or the board of health can use it, their recycling bins available, you know, now that it's available, if it's going to get used more and it has to follow that process, I'm just concerned with just creating more government.
Yeah, and that's fine. Said I have no position, that was really the Finance Board's position on it, so I'm fine either way.
All seven of them? All right, so let's take a vote, or most of them take a vote on the section for general government.
So can I just?
Sure.
So the belief would be that you are going to support the Finance Board recommendation? Is that sort of how you're voting, that you will put forward their recommendations as well, or are you still looking at the department requested? I just want to make sure I'm recording what you're actually going to vote.
Well, how are they, how are they wording it?
They voted based on the numbers that you see in the Finance Board recommended column. So in a lot of cases, it is the same that's been requested. Some cases we've, as the, since the budget was submitted, new numbers have come in, we looked at a few different expense lines and things have increased, so they might have made a recommendation that is slightly higher.
And some things have decreased.
And some things have decreased, so I just want to make sure that if...
I guess that would depend on the motion.
Right, so I just want to make sure if you're going to vote, if you're looking at the Finance Board recommendations, then that's...
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
So someone want to make a motion for approving general government lines?
Could I just ask a question?
Sure.
So the difference between the Finance Board recommends and the department requested fiscal year 2019, Denise, could you just give a quick, so that difference is about $50,000? What is that based on?
It is $50,000 exactly. So that is roughly, so the $10,000 increase with the consulting services.
So I thought that was 7,200.
Nope, 10,000 under consulting services under the board of selectmen.
Oh, consulting services, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's okay. The next increase is, I think the rest of them fall into municipal buildings. Municipal buildings went up 35,000. So that was the 7,200, and then as the custodian facilities position is a big chunk of that, and then as we've started to get more and more repair bills coming in and the cost of maintaining the buildings, we've increased that line item a little bit as well.
Okay, thank you.
So the majority of that is the custodian position.
And you've got some insurance as well.
And the insurance, we, I increased the property and casualty because I'm not, that keeps going up, so.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we accept the Finance Board's recommendation for the total general government of 1.520578.
You get a second?
Second, Matt.
Any further discussion? Ed?
Uh, no.
Bill? All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to public safety.
So I had one question on public safety, and that was related to the $3,000 difference in the clothing allowance. That was a pretty significant hike, and I just wondered what that was related to.
So on, I'm sorry, police or fire?
So we're going, uh, police, I believe it's police, yeah.
Oh, from last year to this year, you mean?
Yeah, so the last year's appropriated was 11-750, and this year is 15-250.
Yep, so in the actual documents that were submitted by the police chief, he is requesting a minimal, minimal clothing allowance for the reserve officers. They currently pay for all of their uniforms, all of their equipment, where the full-time officers get a stipend contractually for clothing. So he was requesting, it was a couple hundred dollars, I think, per reserve officer to give them a little funds towards...
And how many reserve officers are there?
We have quite a few.
We do have quite a few. I want to say maybe we have 10, and it might be like $300 per officer. Again, it was minimal towards them, but he just felt that anything we could give them to help.
Okay, thank you.
And then the fire, so we did, most of the fire expenses are based on discussions with the acting chief and current spending for equipment needs and testing and maintenance. So those numbers have all sort of been reworked based on the current situation in the fire station.
So my only concern about that is, and I know that sort of the consulting fee is partially meant to address sort of maybe how we're going to proceed forward with the fire department, but this doesn't appear to permit us, and maybe it wouldn't happen in this fiscal year, but it doesn't appear to permit us if we wanted to increase the hours of the fire chief to do that.
It does not. I proposed that, it was not received by the three members that were here, received well by the three members that were here last meeting. So I had originally had that number, 40,000, to give some flexibility to this board in hiring. The belief was when the time came, we could readdress that because likely we'd be well into the new fiscal year when you're hiring, so that this would be enough money to cover sort of the remainder of the fiscal year and budget appropriately either at a special or next year's annual town meeting.
Okay, so my only question about that, because I had spoken with Kurt, and he told me that his hourly wage is more than if we were paying the fire chief. So with that in mind, how does that produce that result? So, you know, I don't think that we can make the assumption that that, that we're going to have that whole chief's salary if we're paying a significant amount for the acting...
But that was part of the budget anyway.
Right, but then the acting, so Kurt's wages really come under the call wages. I mean, we could certainly shift him to the chief wages, but his salary is already budgeted for.
Right, but, but normally, he would not be working that amount.
Correct.
So these call wages are not going to account for the fact that he's acting in that capacity. Then are our call wages too low because they don't account for the fact that we have someone who's in that interim role?
Right, so we did increase, so the call wages that was requested by, in the fire department budget, they submitted two different versions of the budget, one to stay within the 2.5% budget guidelines and one at sort of a wish list. Their call wages came from their wish list item, which is 115,000. We did split it up to take 7,000 from that and put it under their company reporting. That's when people come in and do the reports. Finance felt that was important to separate that out from the physical call wages versus reporting wages, but those are equal to 115,000, which as you can see is $15,000 more than what's in there this year.
And I just don't have a sense of, you know, is Kurt working an extra 19 hours a week in that capacity? I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense.
Right, I don't know. I don't know what he's currently working and how many hours he's putting in.
So that's my only concern about that, is that we end up being at a deficit because we haven't accounted for that. So that's, I would share that with the board, that that's a concern that I have.
But we have padded the firefighter call wages quite a bit.
Well...
Wait, and you're not looking at an annual number, you're looking at semi-year?
No, but...
Four months?
The amount of call wages has gone up because of the class, which hasn't even been a year, right? So is there any mechanism to project out how much that's going to cost now that we're in full? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right, no, I do, and I don't know, because I think it's still just an estimate on what you think we're going to get for calls.
So like what do we, what do we think that we spent this year?
If the current chief's wage is still in there, in the new fiscal budget, so we're only talking the difference between what we're paying him, his hourly rate and Kurt's hourly rate, so it's not like a lot, it's, I mean...
Well, I hear that, but that doesn't, and that's fine, but that doesn't address if we bring on, if during the fiscal year we want to hire somebody else.
Right, so the request was a 15% increase to wages, their calls have increased 10%.
Okay, so then I guess it becomes whether that 5% is enough to cover, you know, if during this fiscal year we want to hire somebody, and I don't, again, I don't know the answer, but...
I just, I thought maybe, my train of thought was that by the time we get to the fire department, talk about a new chief, I think we're going to be well into the fiscal year. By the time we advertise the position, by the time we interview the position, I think we'll be into, close into next year, September, October.
So you'd be looking at 29,000 to cover six months worth of wages, is what we're talking, roughly, you know, approximately?
Potentially if we got there. I mean, I hear what Bill is saying, I think that's possible, that it could take that amount of time.
And the reason that I had said to hold the 10,000 aside that Denise had put in is I thought we might need a consultant or something to come in, but we could also move that money back if we had to.
We could transfer it back at a special town meeting if it's not needed for consulting services.
Okay.
So we were trying to do our best to guess at a timeline based on the length of time to hire someone, interview and hire, and then what that would look like, and then what it would look like as, what the budget would remain for those particular job bumpings. So that being a great unknown, we had to guess and come up with something that we're going to use.
Okay, so in a worst-case scenario, if, so the budget has gone up about 30, the fire department's budget has gone up 36,000, does that sound right?
41,000.
Oh, 41.
From the 255, that's what was last year.
Oh, it says 264.
No, that was what was spent the prior year.
Seventeen.
You need to look at the column right before total fire department budget.
Appropriated FY '18.
Right, so 255 was last year's budget.
Okay, so $41,000. I mean, just so that I understand, like in a worst-case scenario, if we were in a situation where we didn't have adequate funds to bring somebody on board, what were, would we have options then?
So again, if we had enough funds that would carry us to either the annual town meeting or whenever we have a special town meeting for the school, we could then request a transfer at that time to add additional funds to that line.
Okay, so we have some options available. Okay, thank you. I think I'm okay.
Anything else in those police, fire, building, emergency management? That's what makes up public safety.
Bill?
Makes up 11% of the total budget expenditures is what it makes up. No, it's the next, next call, Mike, I'm going.
Ed, anything else on that?
No.
Bill? All right, someone want to make a motion on it then?
I'll make a motion that we approve the public safety proposed budget as recommended by the Finance Board in the amount of 1.794,697.
You get a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right.
Education?
The 800-pound gorilla.
Which we don't have any control over, right? I mean, we can't change those numbers.
Zero control.
It is what it is. So I make a motion that we approve the total education Finance Board recommendation of
You get a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I think this is the number that people really need to understand. 63 cents of every dollar goes to education. So out of a budget of 16,879,649, we get 6,324,000 to cover everything else in this town. That's not easy.
And unfortunately, as long as we are part of a regional agreement, there really aren't any other options.
Correct, but, you know, what I'm trying to make the point is, when people come to look for money, it's not that we're, you know, opposed to all these great ideas and these great opportunities they see, it's, this is such a handicap to work with such as, we don't even have 50% of the total expenditures of the town. I mean, this is a tremendous handicap to us that I don't know if people understand exactly the numbers that we have to deal with on a yearly basis. This isn't easy. Think about it. You take out the schools, everything else in this town has provided with 37 cents on every tax dollar we, we collect. That's a tremendous chore.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Do I have a choice?
You could not, you could not vote. All right, moving on to public works. Did you have any questions on that, Lisa?
So public works, I will just say, we did request an increase to snow and ice, so we are bumping that up from 165 to 200,000. It's getting harder and harder to cover our deficit every year because the deficit just grows and grows. So that is a good step to make that number a little more realistic. Other than that, we touched upon the cemetery, the trash budget was pretty standard in the contract, and then the tree warden, I requested to increase it because $5,000 is the equivalent of pretty much one day of a tree service coming in and giving us one day of service.
Sort of knowing what we have going on with Elm Park, we're probably going to need.
And one of, you know, that last storm, it's the highway budget that's covering all the trees removal, so I figured if one day can help out, might as well increase it.
All right, so go ahead.
I was going to just make a motion.
All right, go ahead.
So I make a motion that we approve the 762,319 as recommended by the Finance Board for the, oh, I'm sorry.
Should we go down to total public works at 1.3 million?
Sorry, I didn't realize we weren't done. Sorry, my mistake.
No, I don't think there's any other questions. Are there any other questions on that? Well, go ahead, make a motion, we can ask if there's any other...
So I make a motion that we approve the 1.360,482 as the total public works budget as recommended by the Finance Board.
You get a second?
A second.
Now, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? We got human services next.
So human services, the board of health, council on aging veterans, really the only thing was the board of health submitted two different budget requests. One was requesting a couple of extra hours for two employees. The Finance Board did not support that. They supported what the council on aging requested. And the veterans, I had originally increased it, but now based on where we're currently trending with the veterans benefits, I brought it back down. That is another wild card based on who lives in town and what services we are providing. So we're trending low again this year, so I bumped that back down a little bit.
So I would make a motion that we approve the Finance Board recommendation for the human services budget of 221,854.
You get a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Moving on to the library.
Library, the recommendation matches what was requested from the library. And that was increased, the material line was increased to represent the required state spending.
So my only concern about this number is that I saw from the warrant that we're not supporting them getting assigned. So if the recommendation is that that comes out of their budget, I'm just wondering where that would come out of their budget.
And that was just the Finance Board's recommendation, so you all may have a different position on that.
I see.
You guys haven't voted on that yet.
Okay, gotcha.
That's what the Finance Board recommended for that article.
Okay, so I would make a recommendation that we approve the total library budget of 256,292 as recommended by the Finance Board.
You get a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Moving on to total debt services.
So Denise, could you explain this one a little bit?
Yep. So that is our debt service for the Center Street purchase, the fire truck, and the police dispatch center. I think we have our final year. So the Center Street and the fire truck, we actually get back on the backend because it's debt exclusion, but we have to budget for it, and then it's an offset with the money we raise in taxes.
Okay.
But those are all set schedules based on what we've previously borrowed for.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we approve the 392,000 as recommended by the Finance Board with respect to the debt service, total debt service.
You get a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Next up we have unclassified.
And unclassified is... And unclassified is really the only change since we originally submitted it, is I was jumping up quite a bit on the Medicare tax, because we always run short on that, but I don't think it's quite as much as what we need. So I've brought that back down a little bit. Regarding the OPEB, we're still in talks with the state on our free cash. We've been going back and forth. Right now, they're around 200,000 of free cash, based on our books actually reconciling now. In the past, it was not reported that we were unreconciled, so I think their previous numbers might have been a little skewed from us. So if, in fact, we are only at around 200,000, we do have enough to cover the OPEB 85,000. That was something that this board and finance were committed to, so I would recommend keeping that in at this point. So, that would be.
So this, there is a disparity between the finance board's recommendation with regard to the Medicare tax and, I think, your recommendation, correct?
Yes, but I'm the one who brought it back down, based on where we're currently trending.
So your, your recommendation is consistent with what the finance board recommends?
Correct.
Okay. And the street lighting going down?
Street lighting is going down because of the LED lights.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we approve the 678,813 as part of the unclassified budget as recommended by the finance board.
Do we get a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Do we need to take a vote on the grand total, or can we just leave it at that?
We don't have to vote on the grand total, all right? Because then it'll add it up.
That's it.
All right. So next up, we have 2018 annual and special town meeting warrant discussion and vote.
So you'll need to use the ones that I left for you on the table today, because they are, or Bill, it's in your packet, Ed, it was in your supplementary packet, because I'm continuing to get feedback from town council on language changes. So I will say that the articles you are voting on, in context, will not change going forward. Just legal language may, as town council continues to review it. We can, I think the special town meeting warrant is fairly quick. Hopefully, it's fairly quick. There are five articles on there. The first article, the first two articles are actually to bring us into compliance with the Municipal Modernization Act. The first article allows us to, we currently are able to withhold a permit of any kind if people owe us tax money. This one, actually, we had to change the wording to be in compliance with the Modernization Act, and allows us to bring that length of period down to three months. So if someone owes us taxes older than three months, we are permitted to withhold a permit until they pay for their taxes. The second article is just the OPEB trust, and this is literally, we just need to re-accept it, since the Municipal Modernization Act went into effect. So that is really just standard re-accepting. Articles three and four are to extend CPA projects. Article three is for the Groveland Trail. They do not have the full 150,000 available. They're down to about 94,000. They just will not spend that before June 30th. So because their project was scheduled to end June 30th, they're requesting to carry that over for the next three-year cycle, so that they can finish that project out with that, those funds. Article four is the same type of project. It's for the CPA project for conservation restrictions that we've been talking about back and forth on different properties. This is for Wood Street, Uptack Roads, Stephenson's Way. Again, we've started the process with Essex Green Belt to work on those conservation restrictions. We just won't have those funds spent by June 30th. And then article five is, normally, these are all written out in word, verbiage, but the finance board asked me to put it into a chart to make it a little easier. These are our sort of standard special town meeting transfers, to bring us more in line where we're spending. You'll see the majority of the money is going into the snow and ice deficit. Some of them are standard transfers. For instance, police 695s coming out of the patrolman's salary and going into the sergeant's salary. We touched upon that previously, that the contracts are finalized after the budget was set. This is just to bring it back in line. The fire department, 5,000 from their drill line into their testing and maintenance. The town accountant, we're taking her salary and we're moving it over to some office expenses. She attended school this year. So some of those are pretty standard. The rest of them are really all to cover the deficit. This transfer does not fully take care of our snow and ice deficit. This will take care of a large portion of it. We will still have to find additional funds as the budget process in fiscal '18 comes to a close.
So, is it permissible, I'm assuming that my co-selectmen have reviewed this, is it permissible to make a motion to accept it as written?
If they would like to proceed that way, yes.
Is anyone opposed to me making a motion in that way? So I would make a motion that we approve the articles one through five as outlined in the special town meeting warrant. That's it.
Do we get a second?
Get a second.
Any further discussion? Ed?
No, my only, why, why are some of these not put on the annual town meeting and they're at a special meeting? Like, for instance, article one and two.
Because we want them to take effect in fiscal '18 and not fiscal '19. That's really the only reason why we have special town meetings at an annual. They take effect in the current fiscal year.
All set?
Yes.
Bill?
All set.
All right. No further discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we got the big package.
All right, so with the annual, you'll see I redesigned it a bit this year. I've grouped the articles based on their sort of category, and I've placed the omnibus last. So this will keep everyone at town meeting until the budget and all of the financial articles are voted on, to get rid of all of our town business first. So Mike, I don't know if you want to, if you want me to go article by article?
Were we able to do it by sections? Or, no, do we have to go, I don't remember what we did last year?
I don't, last year?
Then we did article by article.
I mean, again, I can go pretty quickly.
So I don't think we need to go article by article, but what I would recommend is, if we have any holes for discussion, that we identify what those are, because I have a few that I'd like to discuss. And then if anybody else does, and then we could take them as our.
I am good with whatever, whatever's the quick way.
I think that's the quickest way.
So you'll see, the finance board did vote on the majority of the articles. They did not vote on anything having to do with free cash. Sometimes they made different recommendations, which I put on their recommendation line just for you all, that will not be printed in the warrant. It's just so I remember to relay to you how they voted. So however you guys would like to proceed.
So I had article 20, article 35, there was a typo, I think. But are you going to proofread these again?
Yes, and town council will also review them, but.
Article 20, is that what you're doing?
Article.
Well, maybe if I do, maybe this is, does anyone have a question on one of the general articles? So one through nine, might be a little easier if we do.
Okay.
I do not. Bill, anything on one through nine?
I will just say, well, so we did talk about, so article seven is the article that we spoke about, that the language for making the road commissioner appointed, you need to have 60 days between a town meeting and a ballot question. So this would actually petition the general court as a special legislative act. Something that the board discussed at our last meeting was then to put on a non-binding ballot question, to get a sense of the town, because this would not require a ballot question. This would put sole responsibility into town meeting, making that position elected to appoint it, and then petition the courts to ratify that. So, in order to do that, so one thing that could certainly help the courts ratify that decision was, is to put a non-binding ballot question. That still says, would you support putting the road commissioner from elected to appointed? If, in fact, they support that, the courts are more likely to more quickly approve that. If they do not, so I put a little caveat there, that's something you could do. So if the, if the town election votes down the non-binding question, you still could petition the general courts if it passes town meeting, or we could state that if it fails at the ballot question, you would not petition the courts.
So if this fails at town meeting, we could still try to petition the court?
No, it has to pass town meeting.
Okay.
If it fails, if a non-binding question fails.
We could still.
You could still petition the court.
Okay, gotcha.
So, that would be up to you if you wanted to proceed that way. It was the, everyone at that last meeting, finance and selectmen, supported going forward with the special legislation, because we didn't want to wait another year to try and get this done.
That seems reasonable.
For at least that article.
Mm-hmm. So that's one through nine, so we're good with one through nine?
Hold on, Ed, Ed, you agree with one through nine?
My only question is on the appointment of the highway superintendent. I'd still like to see it, if it passes the town meeting and it fails at the ballot, I think it should be defeated. The townspeople should be speaking.
Well, I think we don't need to address that until it happens, though.
You get more, you get more people at the, at an election than you do at the annual town meeting.
We don't have to decide that right now. We can decide after the ballot.
That's correct, but I did have a note in there, so we could take that out if that's how the board feels. We would take that note out that actually says. So right now, it says, if the ballot fails, the selectman will not petition the general court. If that's how the board feels, we can remove that note and strictly leave it up to you after the ballot occurs.
I'd rather remove it. And, and decide, decide as a board, as we get closer to that.
I'm sorry, you, 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 so, in other words, what you're saying is, is if the townspeople voted it down, you still wanted to go forward with it?
Potentially, because I, I don't know that, again, being stewards of the town's budget and monies, I think that's what our responsibility is, and that's what we were elected for. And I think if I have to make a decision about what's best for the town, and that's sort of what I'm tasked with doing, I may not necessarily take the position that it's a popularity contest, and for me, it may be that that's the more fiscally responsible thing to do.
Well, I, I don't look at it as a popularity contest. I, I look for it as your, you should be letting the townspeople speak. And if the townspeople say they want it elected, then I don't, I don't think we have any right to, we shouldn't have any right to go forward with, with an appointed position if the townspeople say no. We should be listening to the townspeople. Why, if, if you're going to do that, then why even put it on the ballot? Just move forward with an appointed position.
I will say that town council has recommended that if it does fail at the, a non-binding question, and you still submit it, the general court is not likely to ratify it. So yes, I would agree with Ed. If that's the position of the board, then you could certainly remove it as a non-binding question.
So, my only thought is that the way the current structure exists, somebody can be elected to road commissioner and have no expertise in that area, which is a big part of why I think it's important to move to having that position being appointed, because what position are we in as a town if we have a road commissioner that doesn't have the ability and expertise to do that job?
But he's the most popular florist in town. That's the problem. I agree with you. And that's why I agree with your, your other comment that send it, even if it's a non-binding question.
Well, I just don't think we have to decide that today. I mean, we can just see how it goes. I mean, if the difference is 10, or 20, or 100 votes, you know, does that mean that we don't pursue it? I, I don't want to make a decision about that today, because I don't know what the, what the vote is going to be. And I think to sort of pigeonhole.
I think to keep it open is probably better, and then decide going forward. So we see what the town says, and then say, all right, the town doesn't want this overwhelmingly.
Exactly, exactly.
If they say that it's close, then we can try to make an argument either way.
Right, exactly.
Is that okay, Ed?
No, I can't support it as written. I, I have to, I have to let the townspeople speak on it, and if the townspeople, I, I don't care if 10 people voted, vote in favor of it, then okay. If 10 people vote against it, then I think we should listen to the people. You know, we're here, we're a representative of the people, and if, if we're going to, if we're going to look for their, what they want to do, then we, we should, we should follow their will. And if we're, if you're going to put the vote before the townspeople, and you're not going to, if it's, if it's only a vote, 10 votes, and you're going to say, well, yeah, we're going to, we're going to go along with it anyway, then why even, why even bring it before the townspeople? Let the townspeople speak. And if the townspeople say no, then it should be no.
So how does this work if, do we take a vote on this, or it has to be unanimous for it to proceed in that way?
I think it's just a vote.
Similar majority.
It could be a motion and vote, one way or another.
Bill, do you have anything, Ed?
I agree with Ed. I think the townspeople, I'm elected by the townspeople, I work for the townspeople, and I think the townspeople should have the ultimate say.
Well, I don't think this is saying that they don't. I think it's just, it's non-binding, so it doesn't justify an answer either way. I think it just says, we'll see what the townspeople vote, and if they say yes, okay, then great.
I think all we're saying at this point is just taking that note out, committing that we would not move forward. Because let's say 2,000 people vote to make the position appointed, and 2,010 people vote to keep it as is.
Then it, then it should stay as is.
Okay. Yeah, so I would respectfully disagree with that, and I, I would want to take a vote on that.
So, but basically, what you're saying is, if you come to a, a selectman's race, and somebody loses by 10 votes, you're going to say, well, that doesn't count, let's, let's go along with it anyway. You, the people.
I don't agree with that. I mean, one is a substantive issue, and one is, they're different issues. So I don't think you're comparing apples to apples.
Well, but how many votes, how many votes do you want it to pass by before you say, yeah, okay?
Well, I wouldn't make that decision alone. That would be a board decision. We would have a discussion.
Well, I think we, I, I still stand by, let the townspeople speak, and whatever the townspeople, whatever the townspeople want. And if, if the majority of the board feels that it should be, should be appointed, which is probably the right way to go, then it should be explained to the people, the, our reasons for that. And then, and then to let the townspeople decide how they want to do it.
So I'm going to make a motion that we remove that note, and if my fellow board members don't agree with me, that's fine, but that's how I would like to proceed. So I would make a motion that we remove that note on article seven, so that it gives us some latitude, depending on what the outcome is, to at least have a discussion at a later date, and not be pigeonholed to that note.
You're making a motion?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Bill, you okay with that?
So we're voting just on article, article seven, on taking that phrase out.
Yeah.
And the phrase you're taking out, can you word it?
It just says, it's just a note. It's in gray.
It says if this article passes but the non-binding question number two on the May 7, 2018 town election ballot fails, the selectman will not petition the general court to make the change.
So I'm only asking that that note be removed. It doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that that's not what we're going to do, but it leaves it open, so that we can have a discussion after the non-binding vote.
So as it sits right now, if, if the general public says, no, no, no road commissioner appointment, we can't petition the court the way this is written.
That's right.
So now, if it goes to vote, they say yes, we're good to go, we can petition the court.
And even if they say no, we have the ability to talk about it and decide whether we would still like to move forward. So obviously, if there was an overwhelming vote of 2,000 people support it and 20 people don't, I mean, I think that makes the decision pretty easy. But if it's a closer vote, it at least allows us the opportunity to have a dialogue and still submit something to the state.
And I don't want to, I don't want to debate this all night, but I kind of agree with Ed saying, and I understand what you're saying, but on the same token, when the townspeople, their decision is their decision, and why we put it for them to vote on, we should honor what they voted on.
Right, so I, I just put, I put the motion on the floor, and you can vote for it or against it, and that's okay. We have a second, so I think at this, unless Mike wants to add to that.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, because I agree with both of you.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, because I agree with both of you. Alright, let's take a vote for the motion. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Okay, so we're gonna leave the note in, correct? I didn't have anything on Article eight or nine.
So I think that was all the first nine, so we can vote that as a pack now, right?
Sure.
So I would make a-
Outside of Number Seven?
Nope, you would vote Number Seven as is.
So I would make a motion that we accept Articles one through nine as written?
I will say, I will still say, though, council is still reviewing the rest of the documents, so they very well may come back and say that language needs to be different as the note.
Give me Number Seven.
Number Seven.
Okay.
Because it does impact a non-binding question. So they may come back and change that language, but I will be sure to let you all know.
Okay. Can we get a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Article nine?
Yep.
So currently, seniors, if they file for abatement, is that what it is?
No, so nine, ten, and eleven all go together, just ten and eleven are bylaw changes. So Article nine will allow seniors that are low income, but are not able to participate in our senior work-off program. Perhaps they are-
Disabled.
Disabled, just not well enough to participate. So currently, they can apply for an exemption and get $500 off. This would increase that to $1,000 off.
Their property taxes.
Their property taxes. And then ten and eleven go along with that. It's the same thing, we're increasing the exemption from 500 to 1,000. Article 10 actually also will remove the 10-year residency requirement. So currently, you have to live here for 10 years before you could apply for our senior work-off program. So they are removing that sentence and increasing the limit.
Do we want to do one through eight, and then put nine through 11 together? Do you feel like there needs to be further discussion on those?
You could do one through 11 if you'd like.
Yeah. Bill, did you want further discussion on those?
No, it just seems like the timing, again. They just, we just got a beautiful presentation for almost a full million dollar senior center.
Do you have any statistics on how many people take advantage of this program?
So, really, what people are taking advantage of is Article nine. And we have very few people participating in the senior work-off program. And, the belief was, it's not enough money, and the residency requirement turns people off. So if we have someone new coming into town, they have to wait 10 years, so. And then the Valor Act, which is Number 11, is for veterans. And we have very few people, if anyone, actually taking advantage of that. So it should be a minimal impact. It comes out of our reserve for abatement line, so.
And it's being recommended by the Assessors' Office?
Correct, and the Council on, so the Assessors' Office recommended the first one, Article nine. Council on Aging and Assessors recommended 10 and 11.
Okay. So then I would make a motion that we accept Articles one through 11 as is.
Can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Bill?
No.
All those in favor?
Did you vote, Bill?
Yes.
Article 12 through 16 are zoning bylaw changes. So I do want to point something out on Article 12, because it was a change you guys made. You specifically, Bill, under Section 7.5 to the definitions, you had amended the original request to add recreation throughout that article. Actually does not comply with state law, we have to remove that. This is the actual language that's required by the state law. So everything is, remains the same as you previously saw it, except 7.52, we removed recreational. This has been supported by the Planning Board, also as well as this board. The other bylaws are articles that have been discussed, that the Planning Board Bylaw Subcommittee has been working on. So these are what they've taken up this time around. Accessory apartments, home occupation, dimensional requirements, and then the definition table.
So I would make a motion that we approve Articles 12 through 16? As is, excuse me?
Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Okay.
So now we're at seventeen?
Yes, so 17 to 21 are the community preservation articles.
Well, 20 is as well, right?
Yep, 17 to 21.
Oh, 17 to 21, okay.
So the first four are for specific projects, and the fifth one is their normal annual appropriation article.
So, I would like to speak to Article 20, just to provide some more background information. Because I saw that the Finance Board did not recommend that one.
Correct.
I think that should stay as is. It doesn't mean that we're going to spend that money, it means that it's available. And the Elm Square Committee is still working on that. And we had a meeting last week, in which we have all of our documentation together, and we were going to give to Town Council. So now we have two appraisals, we have the highway report, and we're getting the 21E, so that we can give that to Town Council and have them give us guidance about what is a appropriate offer to make on that property. And if we were to not include this article, and if it were not to pass, we wouldn't even have that option.
Who, if that article passes, who has control over those funds to pay for?
Well, it still has to come before the Board of Selectmen. Yeah. I mean, we wouldn't enter into any, oh, Mike is gonna speak to that.
If, if that article, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mike Dempsey, speaking for Community Preservation. So, to answer your question, all this article does is approve up to that dollar amount to go towards the project. But, I believe that if we are gonna purchase that property, that you would need to approve it, and it would be, needed to be approved by town, a town meeting. So it's gonna have to go through the whole process.
So there are other layers, checks and balances and-
So at best, you're looking at next April?
Yeah.
Unless there's a special meeting in October.
Worst case, yeah, worst case.
It will not be October.
No, alright, so at best, you're looking at April.
Yeah, and as Lisa says, I think the committee, the Groveland Square Committee, is very carefully doing its due diligence on it. Because we came in with one appraisal, then we found a lot of information regarding what the state had done with the roadway there, which we thought affected the value. So they went back, did a lot of, asked a lot of questions, and it very may, very well may end up that we pay far less than what we had originally got from the first appraisal. And, we have to be very careful, because the owner knows what the appraisal is, unfortunately. So she has an idea of what the property she wants, and we haven't-
Well, the property is only worth what someone's willing to pay for.
Yes, I know.
So without, you know, dragging this night out any longer.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Just, as a word of caution, I would, you know, when you're looking at buying that, and I'm sure this will come up either on this board, or on the next town meeting, or whenever this gets approved, is to make sure that that land is clean.
Oh, yeah.
Because there was a gas station on there.
It's the 21E certificate, what I'm talking about? That is the certificate that we're-
From the state?
Yes, so right now, Craig Stark has reached out to DEP, and I have some documentation. In fact, we're trying to not even give the packet that we have to Town Council till we have that 21E. So we're not gonna even go through any process without having that in place as part of the-
And that's a state-certified inspector that provides that?
It's DEP, yeah. So we wouldn't even move it forward without that.
Ed?
Mike, maybe you can best answer the question. You're looking for, appropriate the sum of $250,000 from CPA, the general fund, for the purpose of purchasing, excuse me, the property at 299 301 Main Street. But you're, you're looking at, for a 50% match grant, so it looks like you, you, you may pay up to a half a million for that property?
Yes.
Well, that would be the max, the appraisals come in at 400 and something?
450, yeah.
So this, this language was premised on the highest possible number. But, it's hoped that, based on the due diligence that we've done, that we're gonna be in a different place. This is just, sort of to cover ourselves, this is worst-case scenario.
Okay, so that, the final figure will have to come before the town-
Yes.
For a vote.
Yes.
But right now, you're looking at 50% matching grants, and then 50% from community preservation.
Right, and I think the intention we have is that we are not gonna pay more than 50% of it with CPA funds. So if, say we purchase it for 200,000, we'd only use 100,000 of CPA funds.
And I, so, so if you, if you buy this thing for 450,000, say-
Yeah.
So where do you find the money to tear it down and rip the foundation out and get rid of the building?
That's gonna be a separate project after that.
So will that be told to the town people, when people stand up at a town meeting and say, listen, this is getting, this is buying the project, it's not gonna-
Yes.
It's not developing.
It's not developing, not putting the hot top down, not-
Right, absolutely, because there's no solid plan yet of what it's gonna look like. And that's why, this is gonna take a while. This is like, the first step is to purchase it.
So aren't we jumping the gun by asking for 250 at this point, when we have a lot more work to do?
Yeah, but we can't even make an offer on the property without permission, so. I understand what you're saying, but before we could even make any plans about what we would do with that property, we'd have to know that we could purchase it.
You're looking at, between purchasing it, tearing the building down, putting in parking lot or whatever, you're looking at over 900,000.
Oh, yeah, it could be.
And the other thing that you need to convey to people is that there are certain restrictions that come to play when you use CPA funds.
Yes.
Right, I mean, they, people have to know that-
We can't use-
You can't use it just for anything. You have specific use cases that permit that use of that money.
Yes, absolutely. So for instance, we can't use any CPA funds if we were just gonna turn it into a parking lot. And that's, you know, that's an issue, because some people, some of the businesses in town want there to be a parking lot there, but it can't be 100% parking lot.
Right.
So going forward, aren't we putting the car, the car before the house?
No, because I think the committee's intention is to do whatever it takes to use 50% max of CPA funds. So that is gonna restrict, at least half of what we can do there has to come under the category of either open space or recreation.
So actually, you're looking at tearing down two buildings.
Eventually.
The post office.
Well, that depends, that, so there isn't a plan like that in place yet. That's, that's sort of premature. At this point, we're just looking at acquiring the land. You know, there are, there are steps in the process. Right now, we're just looking at-
Is the post office part of that land?
It is, but it's not even definite that, right now, they still have a lease, from what I understand, so. There's not, there's not a plan in place. We have ideas, we've been working with the state, Senator Tar, and the Green Belt, and what's the other association?
Maverick Valley Planning.
Yeah, so-
I'm okay with it, I mean, as long as there's checks and balances before it starts to go forward, you know.
It's gonna come through here.
So, I'm okay with that. So, so that was-
Yeah, so that, I just wanted to provide more information. So I would propose that we accept Articles 17 through 21 as is.
Can we get a second? Did you make a motion? Yes, that's a motion. As a propose.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It was a motion.
Can we get a second? Bueller?
No second, so, I guess, Articles 17 to 19? I make a motion that we approve Articles 17 to 19 as is.
I'll, I'll second that.
Any further discussion on those? All those in favor?
So it seems like maybe Article 21 is the sticking point for people?
Twenty?
Twenty, excuse me. Does that sound right?
Sounds right to me.
Okay. So, what's your reservation?
Why? That's my question, why? Why do I want it? That little tiny parcel of land, let's be honest, when you pull in, you can only go one way out. You can't take a left out of there. I know people try.
But we're not looking for that. We're looking at, to make it green, open space, we're talking about maybe a fishing pier right there. Those are the ways that we can get state monies for it. So I don't think that we're looking for it as sort of like a business proposal. I think we're looking at it as part of, sort of the green space that we have in town.
We don't have enough green space in town, without buying that little corner?
But that's an eyesore, okay.
That spot is-
I agree, it's an eyesore, but-
No, exactly, it's an eyesore, right? And it's sitting there.
How long has it sat there?
It's sat there, it has sat there, that in its current state, for almost six years.
Almost six years.
With a big for-sale sign on it, unfortunately, nobody's interested in buying it. I'll tell you why they're not interested in buying it.
I can tell you why they're not interested in buying it.
They're not even interested in renting it, because it can't be used for anything that's legal.
Because of the conservation restrictions.
Well, because it's right on the river-
No, it's an access.
So if it can't be used for anything, why do we want to buy? Why do we want to spend 225,000, 250,000 of our hard-earned money?
I'll make a motion, it's almost 10 o'clock at night, I'd make a motion that we vote on Article 20.
Well, I will just say, if the board chooses to keep this in the warrant, but not make a recommendation, you could still debate it at your next meeting and make a recommendation on town meeting floor. So you don't have to make a recommendation if you support keeping it on the warrant.
Yeah, that's all I would ask, is you keep it on the warrant. Let us go to town meeting, let the people decide, because that's what ultimately we want anyway, you know? It's gonna be up to the committee to come to town meeting, because guaranteed, there'll be other skeptics.
So you could discuss this further on the meeting for the 17th, if you wanted to really debate the merits further, and actually make a motion on town meeting floor.
So should we just table that?
Well, no, because we still have to have the warrant printed before then, so.
I didn't get it out. I thought I got it out.
Does that, does that give the, does that give the committee time to do all the work and get all the answers for the town meeting?
We're not gonna have all the answers for town meeting. But what we're saying is, we just got our, sort of packet together now, for Town Council to review. But, what we're saying is, we won't even be able to proceed and do anything till next April, if we don't do this. So, it sort of puts us in a position where we're gonna delay it for a year.
Do you think it'll get sold between now and then? It hasn't got sold in six years.
But that isn't really the issue, the issue is, then it's, it remains as is, and it sort of delays the process of beautifying it, which is really what my goal is.
And this, maybe a stupid question, have you talked to the landowner since it's, it's an unusual piece of property? It's, you know, that's been that, whatever, has it been, it's been that way for six years?
Greg has talked to the property owner.
Has she?
Greg.
I've talked to her.
Yeah.
But have you presented to her, saying, look, this is a difficult situation for the town, for the piece of property that it is, what we'll be able to do with it? Do you think like Bruce Tar or Lenny might be able to work something where she could donate it and get a tax write-off? Is that not an option?
It's not gonna happen.
She's not interested in that.
The other option is just sits there and nobody gets anything for her. Right?
I mean, you can't, how can you really, you know, she wants what she wants.
And I'll go back to my original statement, it's only worth what someone's willing to pay for.
Yes, I know. And so, but it's up to, it's up to us to prove to her the value of it.
Which, which the, which the group doesn't think is very high.
Right.
So I guess what I'm saying is, this 250, was based on that initial appraisal- So, I guess what I'm saying is, this 250 was based on that initial appraisal. We've really done a lot of work and we think that number's going to be much lower. But that's what we need the advice of town council on.
So, like Mike had said, I mean, we could vote to support it, not support it. Ultimately, it goes to the town.
Right, as long as you allow it on the warrant. That's all I'd ask tonight is.
Said something that got drawn out before, so what was?
I had made a motion to vote on Article 20 as it's written.
Oh.
To vote favorably?
Or non-favorably.
Or just to put it on the, what are you voting? To put it on the warrant or are you going to vote to recommend it?
Are you, well, let's clear it. So, are you voting, you making a motion to?
On the warrant. We just vote to either recommend it or not.
To leave it on the warrant?
Well, it's on the warrant because I, you guys haven't formally put it on the warrant.
Remove it from the warrant.
Well.
So, we got a motion. Can we get a second?
What, I don't know what his motion was.
To remove it from the warrant.
Oh, so you're making a motion to remove it?
Right, because I don't think there's enough information. I think that we don't have enough firm answers on that project. And the piece of land is, like Mike said, is only good to who is willing to pay for it. And that 450 dollar fee, is that based on a legitimate business that could go in there? That really can't go in there? I don't know. I haven't heard all that.
Yeah, but that's not the place that, I don't want to belabor it, but we would never propose paying that for something if it's not worth that. So, I think you're sort of suggesting that the group.
I'll go back one more thing. You take this to the town people and the town people do not have all the answers and they do not have all the right discussion on it. I feel like it's just, it's not, it doesn't have enough information behind it.
But I will say, I'm sorry, is there a second so we can keep talking about this?
I will second Mr. Selectman Dunn's motion.
I will say that this is the type of discussion we could have at town meeting to say, you know, people need to, well, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, I got, yeah.
If we were allowed to go forward, we'd be able to say, you have to think about these different aspects of this property.
And even if it moves forward, it's not a done deal. This is not making it a done deal in any way. The Board of Selectmen still is going to have the ability to either approve or disapprove it. This is not giving, this is only giving us a piece in the negotiation process. It's not, at the end of the day, this board still decides whether we move forward or not.
Right, so this article will not purchase that land.
There's been laws of discussion. So, we have a second?
Mm-hmm.
And the motion is to remove the article from town meeting. So, let's take a vote. All those in favor to remove it? All those opposed? Okay, so let's take a vote or have another motion.
Well, we don't, we can just put, we don't have to put whether we recommend it or not, right? Or you just want to put that we don't?
Well, the finance board recommends to remove it.
Right, but we just voted to keep it on.
No, we voted his motion to remove it. That didn't pass.
Which would mean that it stays.
But we have to vote for it to stay.
Right, so you should vote Article 20 and 21 now.
You already see how that went off?
And again, well, I will say again, if you, it does depend. If you want to actually make a motion for favorable action or you can just make a motion to keep Article 20 on the warrant without your action and you make that on town meeting floor, however you'd like to proceed.
So, I would make a motion based on the opinions of my peers, I would make a motion, we just leave it on, that we don't make a recommendation. I think that's the way to move it forward.
Will the town discuss it at town meeting?
Yes, on Article 20. That would be my motion.
Okay.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that. Sounds reasonable.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
So, then I would next move to.
Can I just, I just want to clarify if the bills are opposed to that motion?
Yes.
Neither one of you raised your hand. So, you're opposed. Okay.
All right, so.
I'm sorry, Lisa.
Are we on to 21?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. So, 21 is, I make a motion to approve Article 21 as is.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Bill? O'Neil?
No.
Well done. All those in favor?
So, Article 22, that's the big one.
Yes, so 22 and 23 are capital. So, 22 is the senior center at the cost of $3,649,586. Sorry, $3,649,580.
So, I would like to discuss that one separately. I don't want to bunch that with Article 23. So, I would make a motion that we not vote favorable action on Article 22. Okay.
So, we have a motion. Do we get a second?
For unfavorable action, correct?
Unfavorable action.
Yeah.
No second? Okay.
So, is somebody making a motion to vote favorable action?
So, someone want to make a motion? I was going to get there.
Sorry.
Does someone want to make a motion to vote favorably on Article 22?
I will make a motion to vote favorably on Article 22.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Since we did have that beautiful presentation earlier.
So, I will, oh, you're going, sorry.
No, I think that, you know, we put it to the town to vote on. I mean, it is an expensive line item. It is something that has been talked about for over 40 years. I think it is something that will enhance the senior population as well as other people that can use that facility. So, I would recommend favorable action.
And this will, sorry, this will be a debt exclusion question on the ballot. So, this is a binding debt exclusion question, which means taxes would be increased to cover the cost of this. And once it's paid off in either the 20 or 30-year term, it would then fall off the tax rule.
Bill, any other discussion on it?
Just the wording, 3.649 more or less.
It's, that's the legal requirement because it's debt exclusion. So, when we go out to borrow, what may be, when they do the final project, we can't borrow for what we're not spending. So, if the final construction cost comes in at 3,500,000, that's all we were borrowing. So, that is the straight from both town council and debt councils required language.
What if it comes in at 4,500,000?
It's still legally required to borrow if it passes both town meeting and the debt exclusion. Because you do not know the cost of construction until you formally put it out to bid.
So, we're voting at blank check?
Well, you're voting it based on the architectural drawings and numbers.
A best guess, but it's really an open, it's an open figure. Nobody really knows what the final number is.
Well, I would say no. I mean, when we go out to bid, if it comes in at 5 million, this board could say, we're not going to support the bid or we could reject the proposal.
And it's like that, like, you know, if we were buying a truck for the highway department or another police force, if we didn't like it, we didn't have to approve it.
Right, so it's subject to approval of the committee.
That's what happens until you actually put the bid out to buy something or to start building something. Subject to change, I guess is the language.
Right, but I agree. In the language you'll see when we get to the ballot question, you cannot put an amount on a ballot question when it's a debt exclusion question. So, there is no dollar amount on the ballot and that is legally required. But unfortunately, that's how it needs to be.
That's it? Phil?
Yeah, I guess it was set up that way to keep the people in kind of out of touch and out of the know. It's not set up here. I imagine set up in Boston and in Washington, just to keep the people out of the know. Hey, vote on this and we'll tell you how much it costs later.
Well, yes and no. It's again, because there's so many different variables. So, you won't know the construction cost. You won't know the borrowing interest until you go to the market. So, the problem with that is if we put a solid number and then it comes in one penny higher, that whole project is gone. And that's why they have to account for fluctuation of the construction and the borrowing market.
Oh, listen.
Maybe it goes down?
It could go down. I mean, it could.
Kind of like the Big Dig.
It could go down.
Kind of like the Big Dig went down, right?
That's it maybe.
They told us it was going to be 1.5, what?
Trillion.
Billion, right? Turned out to be 15?
Yes, see, the same exact language when the school project comes before you.
So, I guess it's inherent in government.
But there is, there is oversight because you can say, I don't agree with those quotes. You know, go find something else.
There was oversight in the Big Dig too. I don't think it got us too far.
I wasn't there in the Big Dig. Any other questions, Ed?
No.
Bill? Lisa?
I would just say that I don't feel like we can afford it. I mean, 696 people use something. That's assuming that, I feel like the numbers, there wasn't a survey done. The survey from 1973 doesn't help me with what today.
But that, again, that's just like the last article, but that would be part of the discussion at a town meeting where they present why they want it.
Right, but then, but we didn't vote favorable on that.
Right.
So, I'm not prepared to vote favorable on it.
No, that's fine.
Based on a lot of variables, including the fact that we have, you know, a significant portion of our population that does live, and our taxes have just gone up astronomically and.
But that's why the townspeople need to be informed on what they're voting on.
Right.
And I will just say, you still will need to make a motion on the last article. You'll just make it on town meeting floor. So, you as a group are still going to have to decide how you plan to vote on that as a board. So, whether or not we print it.
Will I be permitted to give you like a statement to read on that? No, okay.
Unfortunately, no.
You could do it right now.
You could, we still have another meeting. So, the meeting on the 17th, you could.
You could submit correspondence and that could be part of the packet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. Let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Who's the motion?
This is, the motion is for favorable action on Article 22.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Am I the only person? Geez, I'm a very unpopular person.
This is an popularity contest. You're doing the wrong business if you're all done.
Yeah.
So, Article 23.
Jeff left. Jeff left like an hour ago.
I don't, well.
He was exhausted.
Me too.
So, Article 23 is, so this language has been changed a little bit.
He's got to go all night. That's great.
Awesome. Article 23 has been changed to borrow funds for these projects. Again, with the free cash estimate hovering around 200,000, just quickly, what we're looking at covering with that, which I know we're going to get to that, but since it's sort of in relation to this, will be that $85,000 for OPEB. The 31,000 for the fire SCBA grant, if we are awarded that, that's our portion that we have to pay. And then my recommendation is to take $67,000 and pay off our sidewalk plow. That is our final payment that we need to make in fiscal '19. And instead of taking it out of snow and ice budget, I'd rather take it out of available funds so that we're not depleting snow and ice by 67,000 right off the bat. That would use pretty much all of free cash, again, if it is certified at about 200,000. So, that leaves no free cash for capital projects. To borrow these items, again, this is strictly at the amounts that are represented here. The total debt exclusion, which would be inside Prop 2 and 1/2, which means we absorb those costs within our budget. Repayment year would start in fiscal '20, so we would actually not budget for them until next cycle. The highest annual payment would be $43,000 and then it would decrease every year from there on. So, finance board's recommendation to you guys last week was that we start to work some type of capital program and use capital stabilization. We've already put some money aside from that. Or again, we could absorb the 43,000 within our general fund budget. But so, that's why that, those capital articles, if they are recommended as they stand, we would have to borrow for them. Yes.
The land sales, would that go into free cash?
Yes, so land sales, any money we get off of that land sale, which hopefully will close shortly, just goes to revenue. So, that would fall to free cash at the end of the year.
We could use it for rainy day fund to replace what we're going to be depreciating everything out of there.
Correct.
Okay.
And we actually are not recommending taking anything out of our stabilization. We're just not recommending putting anything in in fiscal, unless, again, unless. I do have articles in here for placeholders for stabilization and capital stabilization. So, if free cash comes in higher and we have some flexibility, we can amend the amount on town meeting floor, but at least we'll have the article in place.
So, this capital project we're talking about, are we talking about the highway radios, not in this one?
Yep, so this is the highway radios, police radios, the police line cruiser.
My question would be on the EMS squad for 85,000. Is that just the vehicle? Is that all the equipment?
It's a vehicle and equipment.
So, but what is that kind of equipment? What are we getting for equipment?
It's $40,000 for the vehicle and 45 or 40, I guess, for radios.
So, the finance board's position on that was, there is a need for an EMS vehicle. They were okay authorizing up to 85,000, but the recommendation is that then this board or me reach back out to the acting fire chief, which I've already done, to tell him we need more certified quotes from an actual dealership identifying the purchase of a vehicle and putting in the necessary, necessary capital equipment, meaning the sirens, the lights and anything physically installed in the equipment. Any medical cabinets, not medical supplies, not the medical bags and things that are articulated, backboards, things like that. That is not capital equipment.
So, what are you doing? Sorry.
Yes, no, that's fine.
My, my concern with this is based on the document we got from Kurt over the weekend. The plan or the view is that we look to have a full-time ambulance in three years, call it. So, that would essentially be Squad 1, correct? If we got a full-time ambulance, that would be.
Correct. You would not need an EMS vehicle if you have a transport ambulance.
If that's the plan and if that's the view, why are we looking to buy an $85,000 vehicle this year and then two or three years from now buying another vehicle for full-time ambulance? So, I think the priority based on the discussions and based on our own little kind of investigation is the radio and the communication is more important for firefighter's safety. So, I would say that we look at funding the radio system and that we repurpose the existing chief vehicle that has most of the equipment in there. We would have to reposition the equipment rack in the back and then look at buying another vehicle as a chief's car and possibly save 50 or 60,000 dollars on that line item and move it to replace the radio system so that we could fund that. I think that that's a better use of money based on everything else we have going on in the budget and as Selectman O'Neil pointed out, of the 17 million, 10 and 1/2 million go towards the school. So, we're going to budget for 6 and 1/2 million dollars for the town, roughly.
Not even.
Right.
6,324,000.
Asking to go back and tax more to fund this, I think, is going to be a hardship. And I think the best use of government funding and the best prudent way to go forward, in my opinion, is to repurpose the existing chief vehicle as Squad 1, move the equipment over to that, put in a new, what is it, cabinet in the back? Is that what they call it? Take that savings and fund the radio system to the extent that it fixes the problems that we've been told are in place. And I've talked to AlCom about that, what exactly that would consist of. Basically, it comes down to simulcasting. Both of the solutions that were presented from the fire department and from finance, they are both analog. They're not one digital, not one analog. They're both analog. So, really, it comes down to simulcast and it comes down to interruptibility, which I think is more important at this stage for the firefighters, for the communications, for the safety and for the connections for the town people. But that's just my opinion.
If I can just comment, since Jeff Pappas did leave, so he was coming here tonight to address item five, which is the radio system. In the initial report that was presented by the fire department, the report that was prepared by AlCom, they referenced regionalizing some communications with West Newbury. Jeff has actually reached out and spoken to the West Newbury Fire Chief and he is still in favor of that approach and said that there is grant funding available for communication systems that he would be willing to apply for.
And, sorry, what that means is actually putting it down at the school, right, which would cover both Groveland and West Newbury.
Correct. So, Jeff Pappas, it was, unless something's changed, was coming here tonight to let you know that he plans to call his capital improvement committee back together to discuss that. He himself was going to recommend to his committee that that item be removed from the capital plan because he thinks there's more opportunity available with regionalizing and grants. So, since he's not here, I figured I would relay his thoughts on that.
So, we might be able to save even more money.
We might. And I would only say to you, Mike.
And get more from it.
Right, so I would say to you, Mike, if you're planning.
Wait a second, save money and get more?
If you're planning repurposing and moving money, you'd still need, you'd need an amount. So, whatever you plan to make as part of your statement.
This is just authorizing up to that amount.
Correct.
We still have to go and get quotes and we still have to approve the buys and all that stuff.
Correct. So, the fire department, it does not say, purchase a new Squad 1. It says, replace Squad 1.
Right, but we approve the buys, right? So, we would go up and say, the board approves the buy for this, either repurposing or a new EMS vehicle. And the board approves or buys replacement system for the radio system, whether it's in collaboration with West Newbury or independent.
Well, so yes and no. You do. You guys just have not imposed those restrictions on departments. So, you would have to make that clear. So you would have to make that clear, that if this funding is available, they can't just go out and buy what they want and do what they want. You, even under the strong chief law, have the ability to set budget parameters, and this could certainly be one of those.
I think, I think given the information that we have, again, this is just my opinion, given the information that we have and the unknowns and the options that could be available to us, I think it has to be up to that amount approved by this board.
And how do you change the language, Denise, to meet the requirement that you're talking about? What would that look like?
Which requirement?
So, if like Mike says, we would like to have...
More control?
Well, in this particular instance, because there's the possibility of, you know, potentially regionalizing, how would we change the language to capture that?
So I think you, so maybe not specifically in this article, but then you could take a vote that with regards to the funding of this, you would like to initiate your budgetary responsibility as far as these items go and...
So we would do that after that?
You would, right. So right now, as Mike said, you would just be authorizing up to these amounts. How that is, again, the radio system, I mean, it does say replace, but the EMS, it's replace Squad 1, does not say purchase a new EMS vehicle. So if we only use $25,000 to replace Squad 1 and buy a new vehicle at a lesser amount for the chief's car, I think that could all be sort of under how you're replacing Squad 1. Then we only borrow the $25,000 that is necessary.
Who, who makes the decision if we're gonna replace Squad 1 or if we're gonna buy a new one? Is that our decision or is that their decision?
Well, again, the strong chief law allows, and it's actually in the back of your thing...
No, I, I know what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, I'm not, I'm not a firefighter.
Yep.
And that vehicle is the vehicle that goes out, every single frontline vehicle. I wouldn't wanna be in the position to tell them the firemen that they, what they should be buying for a vehicle, for a frontline vehicle.
Although they told us when they came to that meeting that that was something that was viable. So they did, they did say that...
I agree, I agree on that 100%. I, I know the vehicle they got, and I think they need a new vehicle 100%. I don't agree with the radios, I think there's not enough conversation about the radios. When they were in here before us last time, it was talked about possibly going to get the microwave. It was, it was confusing.
So that microwave is the, the difference between simulcast and interruptibility and not.
Right, so you just said, Denise, that Jeff is willing to pull that out because there's possible money down the road somewhere?
He himself, not his committee, his committee has not voted.
But my point is, me, I'm not speaking, I'm just talking aloud here, I say, remove the radios, have that conversation later. I'm saying, give the Fire Department a squad because they need a good vehicle, and I say, we shouldn't give them what they want, we should give them what they need. So whatever that number, 85, up to 85, but you're gonna, you're the bidding procurement officer, the bids are gonna come to you, you're gonna have the conversation with them, hopefully, and, and that's it, you know?
But are we even permitted to change Article 23? That's, that's what the Capital Improvement Committee put together. So let's say Jeff decides, are we permitted to change that?
So, I had that conversation with Jeff. So I do think, I mean, today you could change Article 23 because the capital plan in the back of the book will stay their formal plan that they voted. This is the article that's being recommended, so in the past, we have...
But they haven't, if he's gonna convene a meeting, they haven't voted on this.
They voted on this.
Right, but he's voting, he's talking about changing it.
Correct, they have not voted on that.
There's no timeframe on this though, right? Or is it?
Is that a joke?
No. I mean, I'm, like, if it says, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna approve up to $100,000 for this, we're gonna...
Just put up fiscal year.
Oh, you mean on spending?
On spending?
Nope, no.
So it could be June 30th, I mean, I'm sorry, July 30th?
Correct.
Or it could be February 15th.
I got one, that's what I got.
Correct.
Can we, can we talk about Article, what is it, 23, or whatever it is we're on? Can we put that off to the next meeting and finish that up at the next meeting?
Well, so again, I need to print the warrant before your next meeting.
Why don't we just leave it as is without a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Yes, so you could leave it as is without a recommendation.
I would vote that we accept Article 23 as is without making a Board of Selectmen recommendation.
And it could, so, so on town meeting floor, you will need to recommend dollar amounts? And at that point, if it was higher, lower, you could make a different recommendation.
All right, so we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Ed, anything else?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Yep.
Interesting how you went the opposite of me on that. You went to the truck and I went to the radio. No, that's all right. All right. We halfway? Who's ordering pizza?
And I will, I am gonna ask you...
They're not open anymore.
I, I am gonna ask you to reconsider one of them, because I think you guys blew past this whole strong chief, weak chief, that, so you voted to rescind it, I hope you are aware of all that.
Where's that?
Because that was in the very first section of the general articles. So we will have to touch on that again, I think.
Where was it?
Article 4.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Article 24...
I didn't sound it out very good, like, we know all... I don't know the article.
Well, the summary, I have to just put, but the actual article, Article 24 is the standard, it's money...
Why don't we go back and do 4 now?
If you wanna go back and do 4 now.
I thought we, didn't we, didn't we approve 1 through 11?
You did, but I know some of the board members at the last meeting were talking about not supporting, reverting to a weak chief and waiting until a new chief is in place. But this approves rescinding that. That's your recommendation.
You know what, I'm fine with leaving that as is, because we sort of had a discussion, which, it gives us more options. And if we're gonna look at having a consultant come in, I think this is gonna give us the most options.
I just wanna make sure you all knew that you voted on that.
And if it doesn't get approved, then, you know, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's still gonna go to town meeting.
Yes, it's also gonna town meeting, okay.
I mean, maybe someone else presents more information, like the stuff that we got that can sway someone to vote on it, but...
Okay. So then Article 24 is money we get from the Light Department, that's sort of a standard article. So I don't know if you wanna just do that one quickly?
Yeah, I, make a motion, we accept Article 24 as is.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Right.
Articles 25 and 26 are articles submitted by boards looking for available funds to do items. So Article 25 is $4,000 to pair with an additional $4,000 from the cemetery sale of lots to conduct an engineering study. What that would do is look at some of the streets up there and remove them to develop lots. The engineering study would actually come in, figure out how many lots, how many graves could be in each lot, and what would be available. They are running low on space up there, so this is actually a necessary step. We do have the $4,000, I did account for that in our budget. So this would, again, it's a total of $8,000, they would match $4,000 of it.
Sorry, I'm just laughing at the rest of the stuff that's on this agenda. Did you say we have to get through all this stuff tonight?
Or you need another meeting, but next week? This has to be out next Thursday. Those are your options. You can meet next Monday, but this has to be out next Thursday.
Next Monday, I'll be on overtime by then.
Well, does anybody really have anything that we have to discuss on their old business or Selectmen reports tonight or anything like that, or can we just blow through all that and get through it?
No one's awake to hear mine.
Huh?
I said, no one's awake to hear mine.
Yeah, I don't need to.
All right, so we can blow through that, so we don't have to worry about spending another half hour on that later?
Well, I, I do have...
Wow!
We could table the executive session meetings, just vote on the reserve fund transfer.
All right.
Mike, I do have one thing on the Selectmen's, real quick.
All right, someone's gotta get some pizza or something. Go ahead, Denise, we're on Article 25?
Yep.
Okay. What were you saying? Sorry.
So, that was Article 25. Article 26 is, again, so this is the vote of library trustees requesting available funds to purchase and install a new sign for $2,000. They are both, again, with available funds, we do have the capacity if the boards approve it. You can see the Finance Board recommended removing $2,000 for the library, they feel that's a budgetary item, we should not be increasing the budget to account for that.
So my position is that we've paid for the signs for other departments, I don't, I think it would be inconsistent. But I, what I would recommend that we do on that is not vote either favorable, unfavorable, and let the, let them decide at town meeting, because I don't think we're gonna get consensus on that. So just leave it as is.
Is that a motion?
Oh, I make a motion to leave Article 26 as is.
Are you also voting 25?
Yeah, 25 and 20, well...
Or are you gonna vote...
25, you sort of recommend favorable action, don't you? So I would make a motion that we accept Article 25 with favorable action.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Okay.
Then I would make a motion with respect to Article 26, that we leave it as is.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I'm, I have to go along with the Finance Board, I think they made the right call on that.
Anything you feel?
I think the, I'll go with the Finance Board as well.
All right, so...
So other, my only comment about that would be that, do we make other town departments pay for their signs out of their budgets?
I don't know that we have other signs.
What kind of...
The one that's, right, but so, the only thing I will say to that is, the sign that's outside the Police Department is public safety, and the giant bulletin board up front has 183 and 185 Main Street. It does not say Town Hall, it is a combined, this complex, that is an additional sign on the lawn for just the library. So we don't have individual departmental signs, they are the combined 183, 185, and 181 Main Street signs.
Yeah, I think if you live in this community, though, how are you gonna know where the library is? I think the library is a very important...
I don't think you need a sign to know where the library is.
I don't know, really?
It's a giant building, of, I mean, of three buildings at the complex.
That's next to the Town Hall.
Well, and the only thing I will say is...
It's not like we hit it.
Over both doorways, so over the library's front door, it says Langley Adams Library, just like it says on the Town Hall that's facing the street. Again, it's just an additional sign out there. I just wanna caution that the bulletin board does not say Town Hall. It is, the town office is 183, 185 Main Street.
The, the sign that's out there for the library now is in disrepair, it, it definitely needs to be replaced. There is one there, but there's not much that's readable on the sign. It should conform with the, with the other signs for the town businesses, town building.
It came out of the Pines budget.
All right, so...
There's a recommendation and a second to leave it as is with no recommendation.
All right, so all those in favor? All those opposed? 27.
So, are you recommending, so you're recommending not putting it in? Because the recommendation was for...
We're, I guess, we're going with the Finance, Finance.
So you're gonna make a motion to that effect? Because you just voted down Lisa's motion. But her motion was not to remove it, or, but her recommendation was to leave it as is.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we go with the Finance Board recommendations on Article 26 and that it be withdrawn.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? 27.
27 and 28 go hand in hand, they are to, 27 is to transfer from the Conservation Commission fees account to the salary of our part-time conservation agent. Article 28 is to transfer funds from the conservation fees account to the conservation expense account. Article 29 is to establish the limits on the annual revolving funds. That's pretty standard, we can't spend the money if we don't collect the money, that just authorizes spending. Article 30 is to transfer $125,000 from the overlay surplus account into balancing the town's general fund budget, and we have done that for the last few years. We set aside money every year for abatements, and when abatements are not used, that money falls into overlay surplus. The assessors can then release that for purposes as needed. That number's actually decreased. In the last few years, we've been at $190,000 that we've needed from surplus, so that's down because we don't wanna, we wanna try and decrease our reliance on that money. Article 31 is the $85,000 from OPEB for free cash. And then Articles 32 and 33 are what I touched upon briefly, they are small amounts of money from free cash to stabilization and capital stabilization. Those amounts would need to be amended, or these articles would need to be withdrawn if we do not have that free cash available. But this actually will allow us to make a transfer, should the number come in higher than what we've been told. Article 34 is to transfer the $31,000 for the FIRE SCBA grant from free cash to that grant item. If they do not receive the grant, then that money would fall into next year's free cash as unspent. Article 35 is the recommendation I made to you to pay off the...
Sidewalk plow.
The sidewalk plow, and get that so we're not using our snow and ice money. And that will pay it off completely and we will fully own that sidewalk plow. Articles 36, 37, 38, 39 are water and sewer retained earnings, so it's their equivalent of free cash. Article 36 and 37 are for additional renovations towards the 23 School Street building, so their budgets are split 70% water, 30% sewer, so this falls in line with that. Article 38 and 39 are for the purchase of a new F-350 truck, again, splitting the cost between water and sewer.
Did you mean to spell 14 that way on Article 39?
No.
Didn't know if there was an English spelling that I wasn't aware of.
No, and I'm, I don't, I actually just copied and pasted. I didn't get, I didn't write those articles, I copy and pasted them. And then Article 40 and 41 is the water and sewer budgets. The Finance Board did recommend favorable action, I just hadn't had a chance to fill in those columns yet, so they did recommend favorable action on both of those items. Article 42 is the omnibus, which you have already voted.
Oh, is that it?
Article 43 is just the closeout, to just ratify the salaries that were approved on the previous line items. And actually, that number's gonna change, because I re, we added more articles, so that last one's gonna be a little different.
What do you do with those, Question 1 and Question 2?
So, that is the, so because we are required to post the election warrant as well, we've streamlined it a bit and put it right within our warrant as our last article. So Article 44 is the available positions that people will be voting on when they go to the ballot, and then those will be our two ballot questions. So Question 1 is the senior center, Question 2 is the non-binding road commissioner article. And that is the last of the articles.
Question 35?
Yes.
The note doesn't seem appropriate.
35, hold on. Oh, you're right. I will, I will change that note. Any questions on any of those financial articles?
Restart with 27? I move, we accept Articles 27 through 43.
44, because you need to...
44 as written.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Lisa?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, more.
I have to amend that, because there are some, not as written, there'll be a spelling change in Article 4, yeah, as discussed.
I will make those slight spelling changes and no changes.
I'll resecond that.
All those in favor?
And again, I will just caution that some of the language may change when council makes their final revision. If anything changes anything materially, I will let you know, I don't expect it to. It will just bring us into compliance with what's required.
Okay.
Alright. That was awesome. Vote to the board. Executive session minutes from March fifth, twenty eighteen.
Can we take it out?
Is there issues with it?
Oh, I don't know, I'm just gonna spend the time.
If there's no issues, then we can just vote on it. Anybody have a chance to glance at those, if you motion?
There was one I wasn't here, so I can't.
You were, Bill was not at the March fifth.
What was that about?
That was the land sale. That was actually, it's really basic. You didn't take any votes, Lisa, you would ask me to write it up for the following meeting.
I'd make a motion that we accept executive session minutes from March fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
I'll second it.
You can't second, you weren't there.
He was here, but John was not there.
The other one.
Alright. Seconding, all those in favor?
Bill, you abstain?
Yes.
Be best.
Alright, reserve fund transfer request for twelve thousand one hundred and eighty for computer hardware maintenance. That was for the ransomware?
Yes, so quickly, so normally I would just find available funds and make a special town meeting transfer. Because we are limited, it, it was the approach that we take this out of the reserve fund because they're, only this board and the finance can release those funds. So we'll cover that money with the reserve fund transfer and leave the other available funds to cover the other deficits, namely, snow and ice. So the finance board did approve it at their meeting on the twenty-eighth.
So I would make a motion that we approve the reserve fund transfer request for twelve thousand one hundred and eighty dollars for computer hardware maintenance.
I'll second that.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Alright, let's try and keep these kind of brief. We have old business. Bill? Any else, start with you.
I got plenty of it, but my wife is sick and I've been gone, so I'll pass and with the reserve, reserve the right to double up next meeting.
Okay. Lisa?
I don't have anything.
Bill? I got one quick thing, old business, I am going to the meeting at Sewell Street tomorrow for Bill Daley's project. There's a, there's a, some kind of meeting for supplemental information. Sewell Street quarry reclamation, EEA number one five eight three three in Groveland. I'll be there at ten.
And can I just ask, did you get, how did you get notified of that?
I had an email.
Okay, did it go to everybody else?
No.
No, we're not special.
I, I was-
There's an army email on it, so.
Okay. Okay.
So I don't know what it is, I figured I'd just go and see what the discussion pointed and I can report back at the next meeting. Okay.
Would it be a problem if I tagged along?
No, please, I'll, I'll call you in the morning.
Be available, unfortunately.
Correspondents, we have the minutes from March fifth, twenty eighteen. Minutes from March nineteenth, twenty eighteen. Executive session minutes from March nineteenth, twenty eighteen. Special meeting minutes from March twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen. Fire radio communications information provided by Alcom, submitted by Kathy Castren Ellis. We have support for strong chief by acting chief, fire chief Kirk Rochella. Fire department structure report by acting fire chief Kirk Rochella. And now we are on to a quick finance.
It's very quick. The first thing is, so as I touched upon briefly, we talked about it in our last meeting, school building committee is not going to be prepared for a fall town meeting. They are looking to submit the, I guess, next phase to Mount School Building in-
December twelfth, as opposed to October.
Yes, and then that kicks off a ninety day?
It's a hundred and twenty day.
Hundred and twenty, so a hundred and twenty days from the date of submission.
That's why we both go.
We are required to hold a special town meeting and a town election. That brings us to February, March timeframe. So I am waiting, this time of year's a little crazy, so the finance director from Merrimack, myself, and a representative from West Newbury will meet and sort of throw around some dates. They've asked us to hold them all on the same night. It has to be a unanimous decision for that type of vote. So really, my only question to you all is, one thing that was thrown around at the building committee meeting is a Saturday election. Just wanted to get your thoughts on that before I proposed that, I met with the other two communities. How do you feel on a Saturday election?
So why was that proposed as being a good idea?
It would bring more people out, is what they had believed.
Really? Saturday? You think so?
Yep.
As opposed to work?
Depends, depends on what month you hold it in.
Well, so that's also a discussion. So February, we were concerned with people that are away for the winter, school vacations, things like that. My recommendation would be we plan it sort of after school vacation at the end of February, beginning of March. I don't want to go too far into March because then we're really encroaching upon the annual town meeting and that's a crazy time of year for all of us. So it's a crapshoot with the weather.
Well, the idea of Saturday, I think, is, is very important here because if we do, we're dealing with, as we just witnessed, a very fickle and unpredictable time of the year as far as weather's concerned. So the idea to, to have the Saturday election where most people don't work on Saturdays gives them time in case we have some inclement weather to clean up and get to the polls.
Yes, because in the last few storms, the Secretary of State's office has ruled that a weather event does not change a town election. So if an election is scheduled and there is a blizzard that day, the election goes forward. So that is something we need to keep in mind.
And if it's a Tuesday or a weekday, it severely, I would think, would limit the number of people that would really like to participate but would be basically cut out of the process. And it's so important that all three towns have this election on the same day.
So just wanted to get your thoughts, I know-
So one quick question? So back to the timeline, so we need to have, within that period, we need to have a town, a special town meeting and a vote?
Correct.
Right.
And then we're gonna have our regular town meeting and potentially a vote?
Correct. Correct. The thought was, so the time of our annual election and town, we, we missed the criteria. So you could request that the MSBA authorize it, but it's not like we're missing it by a day or two. We happen to be, I think it's like two or three weeks out. There's no guarantee that they would approve that, so.
Which means we'd have to wait to the next cycle, which would be June.
Right. So I just, again, I just wanted to see before I started meeting with the other two communities, what your feelings were, because I know-
I'm open to it, I think it's gonna, you'll have to see what they say too.
Wes, I know, that's what West Newbury, they were the town proposing it at the last meeting, so. I know, I'll tell you, Merrimack is frustrated with the whole, they don't want a special election. They, they think it's ridiculous that we need to hold a special election so close to the annual, at least talking with their finance director, so. I'll meet, I'll bring some dates back, but-
I mean, my feeling is, however you can achieve consensus, I'm okay with.
Okay. Is everyone good with that?
Sure.
Okay. And then quickly, the other item, I started to get requests for using behind the Bagnell School for the fields. Wanted to get your, the board's thoughts on if it's ready to be used. I don't really know, I don't know anything about fields, so.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to Selectman Dunn about that because he may be the resident expert. I, I know we just seeded it last fall. How, is that grass, has it taken well enough that it can be, they can take a pounding? I mean-
I mean, it could definitely take some play, but pounding, probably not. I mean, we put it in, what, late August?
Well, we did a few different seedings throughout the summer, I think, last year, we did the final one in the fall.
Right. Are they looking for the ball fields, are they looking for the-
Well, there's one for the ball field, which doesn't seem like it's a big deal.
No.
It sounds like T-ballers to young kids.
Yeah, soccer.
Sure.
Oh, soccer?
Yeah.
They're gonna wear them out no matter what you do. Soccer's gonna wear a hole in grass no matter what you do.
Well, is it gonna ruin what we do?
But is, is, is the grass, is, is the grass too immature at this point now to allow that kind of use?
It's been mowed a dozen times last year, probably, right? If it's been mowed a dozen times, it should be fine, but soccer, if they, if they don't, if they play-
On top of recess.
Are they using for recess?
Yeah. So it's on top of the, already getting used. Is it gonna be too much? Like, I know the, the T-ball area, that's not gonna be anything.
Right, but I'm saying if they play every single Saturday right here, soccer, and they don't alternate someplace else, it's gonna wear a hole out, no matter what you do.
So we can limit it to usage? Or do you want to just keep people off grass?
They have to move them around different areas, they just can't stay in one area and wear it out. Like Shanahan Field, they're, they have to play those areas every weekend. That's why they get one out, because they can't move them around. There should be enough room down there, you could say, okay, you gotta go here.
And it's only practices, right? It's not, is it just practices?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's just practice. That wouldn't be too bad.
Okay.
Get some fertilizer on there early in the spring and, and, and get it going.
Yeah, but I would say that if, if, but Bill's suggesting that it's alright, but to make sure that they relocate every practice so they're not just in the same area, just to protect it.
And one thing that you're probably gonna have to do is, I know we'll have this conversation another night, but the ball fields are gonna need to be cleaned up.
Well, that was my next question.
They're gonna need to be re-cleaned up, they were weedy in the fall, they're gonna need to be re-cleaned. And then, I don't know what the school's doing, but the playground, the chips are gonna need to be done and-
So we do still have some money in the remaining Bagnell funds. And I know the summer program will pay towards the maintenance, but what are we doing? So are we gonna cover the cost of fixing those ball fields for people to use? Or should we charge a maintenance fee?
There should be a maintenance fee, I mean-
There's two fields?
Is there appro, do they have a, a school committee that's taking care of the mulching and the cleaning, nothing, right? So it's strictly, I mean, you're talking, I mean, I'll go down and look at, I haven't been back there, I don't know how the chips look. We might be able to get someone to go down there, re-rake it out, clean it up for one year, we got a lot down there. Maybe we can get Cassandra to have the army come in again, but-
And I, yeah, and I think with the, in regards to the clay down there, we could, you could-
Well, if you can get the, the prisoners down there, you can get them to rake it out and clean it up again.
Can we get them, not when school is in session, please?
We gotta make sure we have coffee and water this time because they were pretty mad at us.
Okay.
I'll go down there, if, if you get the prisoners, I'll go down with them and, and-
Yeah, and I'll help on it if it's on the Saturday, so I'll go down and help weed for a little.
We just gotta have coffee and donuts because they were ripping those in.
Prison's open twenty-four seven?
They wanted a bathroom, but they can't go in the school, so.
Can't take them to the Pines either.
We can't be portable for the morning, so.
Okay, so, okay, I'll, I'll work with that.
You all set? Thank you. Alright.
To adjourn the meeting?
No, no, we gotta go selectman time. While we have a chairman, Bill? Quickly, please.
The dead back will be multi-use, right, the back of the Bagnell, it won't be exclusively one group or another?
It will not be, so I will say, I don't really believe on the first come, first served when we have limited space, so I don't know. I may have to bring those requests to you guys if we get more than a few. Obviously, Bagnell School is the priority, and then the summer program is the next priority. So they have to work around the schedules of both of those.
Is that it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're all set, right?
Okay, so on the selectman time, real quick, last meeting, we talked about the retiring electrical inspector. I would like to thank Al Seavy for his twenty-odd years in the town of Groveland as the electrical inspector.